I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for April 15th, 2014. I'd invite you to stand if you wish. Tonight, we have a very special guest, Colonel Jim Huggins, and the Civil Air Patrol is here with us tonight to present the colors, to do the pledge, and provide the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Chaplain Radston Bennett.
Let's join together. Blessed are you, oh God, our great Creator of the universe. And as Creator and King, you have granted us the ability to establish communities and to select individuals to take on the responsibility of caring for and protecting the community from harm. Thank you for those who have accepted the responsibility of governing in this city of Bowling Green. We pray tonight that they will deliberate with wisdom and clarity and make decisions based on what is best for the city according to your matchless will. Guard them from the trappings of influence and protect them from those who desire to manipulate circumstances for selfish ends. And now bless us in this gathering and our travels home at the end of this meeting. Amen.
Thank you. Please be seated. Colonel Jim Huggins is here to provide us just a brief update on the activities here in our Bowling Green post of the Civil Air Patrol. Colonel Huggins?
Thank you, Mayor Wilkerson, and City Council, and guests. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak to you. My biggest challenge is making sure this works alright, and so I may have to ask one of the fifth fitters or fourth fitters what I typically do. I'm Jim Huggins. I'm the Wing Commander for the State of Kentucky Civil Air Patrol, and we have two squadrons here in the Bowling Green Warren County. I'll get to that in a minute. I've got a short PowerPoint presentation I'd like to basically let y'all read. I might make a few comments, and I'll follow with some comments. Then I'll be leaving some information with the council for you. So again, thank you for the opportunity. Our cadets, that was part of our cadet squadron, they've presented colors at Western, the hot rods, many, many places, and it's a great program. We'll talk about that in a few minutes. And they've been practicing since six o'clock, 5:45, to do what they did for 30 seconds there, so they take it very serious. Okay, here we go. Let's see if we can make it work. Alright. Can y'all see him on the way? Citizen-serving communities. We literally come from every walk of life, and that's... And you don't need to be a pilot, but things need to be a pilot. Believe me, if you have any military background, we put one aircraft in the air with three crew members, and we've got to have logistics, we've got to have communications, we've got to have all kinds of things supporting them, just like it's always been. I'm sure the state, I see a lot of firemen here, I'm sure when you go out, there's always somebody back behind you helping the crew in the field. So same thing here, we need all kinds of people. We obviously need pilots, and I was an infantry officer in the reserves, active duty, Vietnam veteran, and it did take a while to learn how to wear the blue. I can't still say it looks, I look plenty in blue. I should be in green. Some of you old timers know it, we used to wear green uniforms. But we need pilots. We need observers, and the observer flies the right seat of the aircraft when we're out on a mission. And the pilot is really the bus driver. The observer is the mission commander, tells the pilot where to go, also looks out the right seat, looks out the right window to look for whatever we want to do. The scanner rides the backseat on the left side, looks out the left side, and they become the aerial photographer. That's become one of the big missions of the Civil Air Patrol was aerial photography, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. Airplanes rarely, rarely go down. Only time, really only time they go down is people fly in the bad weather, which is not very bright, or they run out of gas. And most time, higher aircraft are maintained so well around the country, we don't go down. However, we do lose them every now and then. So there's a three-man crew, three-person crew. My wife's a scanner, so I have to make sure I say it correctly. And photographers, we'll talk about that in a minute. People with financial backgrounds, we manage quite a bit of money, and that's a big part of my wing commander's job, is to get assets and to manage it, and I have a staff that does it for me, helps me with it. Part of our history, we've evolved over the decades. We started out in 1940, '41, and then, of course, became a part of, now partner, primary partner of the United States Air Force. The birth of CAP, officially recorded before December 7th, kind of interesting, the week And they were flying, they started flying coastal defenses on the east coast, and that's what they started out with, and of course they got chartered in 1941, December 1st, Once the war began, we've been on the Civil Defense Services. We flew liaison missions. We did try, and a lot of the early pilots came from the Civil Air Patrol, the Civil and civilian defense service, and that's a lot of them came there. That's what they used to fly, a little 110 horsepower. They flew out over the ocean, flew miles out all over the ocean, 50, 60 miles out, looking for submarines after the war started, 65 horsepower, sorry about that. They actually sank two German submarines with a little handheld, held out the window and dropped the bombs. They lost several Civil Air Patrol pilots, planes got shot down by the enemy off the east coast, and for storms and so forth, got a couple more. And as you know, early in the war, the Germans were flying around the shores sinking our merchant ships, and we helped find, or they did, I was barely a twinkle at that time, to help find lost crews. Alright, and high-profile missions that we've covered, 1993 Missouri floods, if you remember those, the Civil Air Patrol plane was the first non-military aircraft over New York other than the Air Force. They put, and we had a number of photography missions that we flew over New York during the city during 9/11. Provided air security over the Olympics. Katrina, we're very, 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 very involved in Katrina, flying a number of missions and photography missions, supply missions, we take the backseats out, and actually take all the seats out of the aircraft except the pilot, and carry supplies, blood, you know, all kinds of stuff, that they needed, water, food. I will say, we didn't have a day that Hurricane Sandy, a year and a half ago, Civil Air Patrol flew and took most of the pictures you've seen in the media, 157,000 pictures were taken by Civil Air Patrol photographers, and they're pretty rough flying weather, to be honest with you. The wind was pretty heavy, and it was pretty rough flying, but they did it. Very interesting statistic, 95% of the inland aerial search and rescue are done by the US Air Force, and we do it. One reason the Air Force and everybody likes us is because we fly for about $150 an hour. We're not paid, the pilots are not paid. We're trying to get that, but it's not happening, as opposed to, I think, Black Hawks are $1,200 an hour, and F-16s, I was told today, $5,000 an hour. So we're cheap, but we're good. We've been averaging, number of years, saving about 100 lives a year, finding them and We're very involved with Steve Fossett's search, and that went on and on. We helped the Air Force, we fly the cat and mouse, we try to penetrate airspaces and so forth, and they tried to find us. Back in the war, WWII, they did fly, they told the banners for pilots to practice shooting on, shooting down. Apparently, we lost a couple of Civil Air Patrol planes, I'm not a real pilot, real good. I'll talk about communication in just a minute. We did on the West Liberty tornado that hit two years ago, whatever it was, we had aircraft in the air that day, and the governor had the pictures on his desk that night, before dark, caused the Civil Air Patrol, so they could start making decisions, getting relief in, and some other things that hadn't been done. And we're just part of the FEMA effort, we're just a little bit part of the big FEMA effort. We have a National MOU, Memorandum of Understanding with the Red Cross. That's one of the 182s we fly. Kind of interesting, we're the largest fleet of Cessna aircraft in the world, and Cessna likes us, obviously. We have 600 aircraft available nationwide, about 65,000, I think it's in there, about 65,000 members nationwide in the Civil Air Patrol. If you know anything about it... Any pilots here? I fly steam gauges, that's where you know about all this is, I think. Got a glass cockpit. We have five aircraft are now foot glass cockpit, they can do everything, fly the plane, take lunch or button, goes anywhere. We also give orientation rides to cadets. Each cadet that joins Civil, if they want to, can get seven orientation rides. They actually get to fly the right seat, and they actually get to fly the aircraft, seven times free, and most of that, most of the cadets take advantage of that and fly. A couple cadets don't want to fly, but they get to do the stalls, the steep turns, and think that's fun. They think that's fun, so... Alright, I think most of everybody here understands the Fossett Commission taught us law, where we cannot be act as lawmen, is that correct? We can't, some of, we can't do law, we can't go out and find people, bad people, stuff like that. But, and the counter drug, which we have a big mission starting up, probably next week, we fly something called Haver for the State Police, National Guard, and DEA, who have helicopters, they go out and actually find it. We fly the Haver and relay communications back to the mission base where it may be. Helicopters go down in the hills and halls of eastern Kentucky, and they lose communication. In fact, on the DEA helicopter went down last year, and we're the ones on where they were, we were able to get help to them and so forth. So that's a big mission that we do, and we fly that five days a week from 1st of May, it'll be, they'll go into middle of October, looking for the flying Haver. I'd be careful I say that, so... Here is something we did fly, we did fly a recon mission, called Recon, with the State Police last fall, and somewhere right down here is a marijuana patch. State Police was riding my seat, we were in a seat, this is down in Wethke, Kentucky, and I can't tell where it is. But we, it was spotted, we called in, they brought the State Police helicopter in, and there it is, a Black Hawk is full. And that was a couple million dollars, they said, you know, put it in street value, marijuana. And we were able to fly that, and the State Police liked us enough, they were efficient, we fly low and slow, and we're cheap. I mean, cheap in a good way, don't care how much sun's in, okay? And that's not about, that's all State Police from there, by the way, that's not any of us. Alright, I got a couple of things we'll go through here and talk about, and I'll be leaving this with you all, so you can, whatever, and first of all, anybody got any questions about the presentation, about the so forth?
Mr. Denny.
Where does your funding come from, Jim?
Okay, great question, because I'd say something about finance. In the national defense budget, Air Force budget, way down the line, the Civil Air Patrol has a line item in the Air Force budget, which has come from, you know, the defense budget. And so, that's broken down by states, I didn't tell you about the regions, but we get some money, training money, training money, and cadet orientation ride money from the Air Force under the national defense budget. State of Kentucky gives legislature, gives our wing $26,000 right now. We do fundraising, we have local support, and some of our members dues are repaid it back to the individual squadrons. CAP, C-A-P, not only stands for Civil Air Patrol, it stands for come and pay too, okay? Shouldn't say, scratch it off, okay? Good question, and that's something we have to manage our money very tightly, we have to account for it, but the accounting procedures are extremely tight, how we account for everything, and but the Air Force money is basically used for training, training, both air and ground.
Suppose, suppose there is a crisis where you're needed, where does your local orders come from?
Okay, great, great question. We've worked with Ronnie Pearson here, an emergency manager, and we've worked with other, they know to call, first of all, they'll call me and say, hey, we're going to have to have a mission. They have to call the Emergency Operations Center in Frankfurt, who will call the Air Force, Air Force Rescue Coordination Center, AFRCC, which is down in Florida. They get it, they assign it back, and give us a mission number, and we take it going. But calls Ronnie and other emergency managers around the state will give us a back door, heads up, we're ready to go. I can have a plane there in probably in 30 minutes, if need to. But it has to go through the ELC in Frankfurt, and so forth. Great question, and that's a word we're trying to get out to people, too. Now sometimes, the local emergency manager will pay for, pay for the mission. We've done some aerial photography for different entity, local government entities, and they paid for it, they want some things. So we're always looking for the money, I mean, I'm, you know, and a lot of the pilots, their pilots, they have to pay for their own flights and their training, they have to have their own check rides, pay for their own check rides, and we're trying to change that, but that's the way it goes, Joe. Commissioner Denny?
Joe, that's right.
Sorry. We've known each other since 19, whatever. Yeah, that was a good question. Okay, we do have two squadrons here in the Bowling Green, there are 14 squadrons in the state scattered around. We have a, there's three flights, that's less, there's less than 15 people in a squadron, it's three flights. We have a congressional squadron, a legislative squadron, since October, 40 members of our state legislature have signed up to be in the Civil Air Patrol, and they don't have to pay, but they're also, they're also majors. Had a couple of colonels that joined, they had to take a bus to come back and then join us, so... We got 660 members in the Kentucky wing, 415 seniors, 244 cadets. A mission pilot has to fly these missions. A mission pilot, we have something called Transport Mission Pilots, that's where I am right now, and I'm working on being a mission pilot. I've got to take another check ride and learn how to fly in mission patterns and search patterns. We have 27 of those, and we got more coming. Got 19 aerial photographers. Hurricane Katrina, when they called CAP, they wanted people to be trained, they, aerial photographer, which we take pictures, load it on the disk, get on the computer, and we zip it to wherever it needs to go. It's a pretty efficient thing, and so, the cadets do a lot of the ground team, most make up our ground team members, and we do have search, and they work with the aircraft, they know how to coordinate with aircraft. We have nine aircraft in the state, one glider. Cadets love the glider. I'm not too fine with it yet, it doesn't have a motor on it, I don't like that motor on my plane, but have a glider. Ground vehicles and communication. Tim Robinson, who y'all may know, he's a deputy sheriff, I think, he's an emergency manager too, he's one of my communication officers. We have a VHF repeater network in the state, we maintain if we can, anywhere we're going to state, we can hit a repeater and talk back and forth. We're on a DMARC system, are y'all part of DMARC? I can't tell what it stands for. The State Emergency Operations Center can network towers together, put regions together, and we can talk, and actually talk to other states, too. It's up to the Emergency Operations Center in Frankfurt. Have to say, the Bowling Green Airport, One County Airport, and Comarivation have been very supportive of our local people by doing things for us. We're flying a mission right now, a new mission with the Special Forces down in Fort Campbell, kind of a new situation, flying with the Army, because we're cheap. And they have their training spotters who are going to Afghanistan, so they fly with us, and are not at practice spotting and so forth. In summary, we're a volunteer organization where no one receives pay, but they must pay annual dues. Again, we're funded from the Air Force, state legislature, local funds, the member dues, and we emphasize safety and training. We have safety briefings, kind of, everybody has to be safety qualified, or they can't participate in the mission. And that's my spiel, and any questions, invite them to the audience? We get to work with, we have it lately, but we do work with fire department a lot, and we become there sometimes eyes in the sky, and so forth.
Mr. Huggins, we appreciate your presentation. Thank you. I know it's a lot of work that you put in and a lot of volunteer hours. Be sure to thank the cadets for their efforts here tonight, too.
I will do that. I'm afraid I might have to buy them supper, I guess that's what I might have to do now, go buy them supper, but thank y'all for the opportunity to talk and tell you about the CAP.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your presentation. Alright, I think we need to call a roll now, do we not?
Commissioner Waltrip.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Denny.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson.
Here. The first item that we have tonight is a public hearing we're required to have on behalf of the Community Development Block Grant, Year 11 Annual Action Plan, and Mr. Fivell, I believe.
Thank you, Mayor. As you mentioned, Brent's here tonight to solicit comments for our CDBG 11th year plan for spending approximately $521,000 of federal money in our community. Brent?
Yes, sir.
Alrighty, then.
Alright, here we go.
Let's roll.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. We'll let everyone know that this is a public hearing. We do have some sign-in sheets going around, so ask those in attendance to please sign in. It's always nice whenever we have fire department promotions, because everybody shows up to hear me talk about CDBG, so always love to have an audience to talk to. It's wonderful. If anyone does have any comments that they want to make tonight, please ask that they come forward, we're open to accepting those. State your name and your address so that Mr. Dale here can record that for the record for us. Go through. CDBG is a federally funded program funded by the Department of Housing and Community Development. We are an entitlement community, so we do receive this funding every year, and the amount of funding is based on how much Congress allocates, for one, but then there's a formula to kind of break it out between all the communities. So the formula decides how big of a piece of the pie Congress decides how big the pie is, is the best way I've found it to describe it. We've just finished our consolidated plan, you all approved that in February, and there was a process for developing that, for coming up with the priorities for the consolidated plan. There was citizen participation for that part of it, that started back in October with the approval in February, and then we started the annual action plan. And really what the consolidated plan does is identify the priorities, and now the annual action plan says, okay, this is what we're going to do now. So this is getting more specific, more project-driven, whereas the consolidated plan is really kind of talking about, these are the things that we want to achieve over the next five years, and your annual plan is obviously one year. National objectives, you all have heard me talk about this several times, benefit to low to moderate income persons, prevention or elimination of slum and blight, and meeting urgent community development need. Most people always want to interpret urgent community development need as their own benefit, but really what it is, is tied to a presidentially declared disaster. So you're going to see very, very few times is that used. We have done some elimination of slum and blight, mostly whenever we did the downtown redevelopment several years ago, that was all slum and blight type stuff. Most of what we do is benefit to low to moderate income persons. We're required to spend at least, at least 70% of our funding towards that national objective, but no matter what activity we do, we have to meet one of these national objectives. So people will say, what can you do with CDBG? You can do about anything with CDBG. The difficult part is showing where you've met one of these national objectives. This is much harder than finding something that's eligible. Talked about the process, we had a public hearing here on January 21st. That kind of ended the consolidated plan, but also started the action plan, so I was able to roll two things into that one public hearing. We got our public hearing tonight. We did do the, as part of the public hearing in January, unveiled the consolidated plan, talked about the community programming aspect, and also our neighborhood improvement aspect, and I'll get into more of that. So after that, we opened up for agency applications. That started at the end of January, ran through most of February, where organizations could apply for funding for community programming. They then come back and are reviewed by a citizen committee, who met, met with the organizations, and makes the recommendation that I'm here to present to you today. After they make the recommendation, then I go back and draft the plan, and I bring it to you all for presentation, and additional comment tonight, and also throughout the comment period, which runs through April 30th. So after the comment period ends, I'll bring back the actual plan for your approval in May, then we'll submit it to HUD, it's due by the 15th. We'll actually start implementation of the activities in July, once we have all the environmental regulations completed. So that's kind of the process. All this started in October, for there actually to be activity to start in July. There's a lot of planning, a lot of prep work that goes into this. So now we'll talk about the actual projects. First recommendation is the Bowling Green Warren County Welfare Center. All this started in October, for there actually to be activity to start in July. There's a lot of planning, a lot of prep work that goes into this. So now we'll talk about the actual projects. First recommendation is the Bowling Green Warren County Welfare Center for twenty-five thousand dollars for, to continue their rental and utility assistance payments. This will be a one-time rental assistance or utility assistance up to a hundred and fifty dollars, and they expect to serve a hundred and sixty-five households. As usual, if you have any questions, just please stop me, otherwise I'll just keep talking. Second one, Human Rights Commission, thirty-two thousand dollars. This is actually part of an administrative fund, or administrative function, so, but this is to do our fair housing outreach and marketing through the community. April is actually Fair Housing Month, so I wanted to make you all aware of that. And also, this is for them to go out and meet with property managers, landlords, take complaints, those sorts of things, to get out fair housing, to make people aware of what fair housing is. The Housing Authority of Bowling Green, fifty thousand dollars for the continuation of the Small Business Training and Technical Assistance Program. This is actually done in partnership with Western Kentucky University Small Business Development Center, where the Housing Authority hosted. Small Business Development Center provides the training and technical assistance. This will expect to serve a hundred individuals, eighteen small businesses, and create five new jobs. A new grantee that we have this year is Big Brothers Big Sisters of Sasse, from Kentucky, twenty-nine thousand dollars. This would provide mentoring services to LMI youth. Expect to serve approximately thirty people. They have a backlog of eligible youth, but this will be the matching between youth and volunteers to provide that service. So what this would be doing is paying for the person to provide that matching service. Administration, seventy thousand, that's really the cost to run the program, to pay for the expenses of what we have to do. We're eligible for up to twenty percent, this year it's only thirteen point four. This year is a little bit unique in that we already know our number now. Normally, I'm up here telling you, we might know in May or June, let's see, I think this is my fifth year doing this, and I found out in a different month each year. So I never know when the number's going to be in, but we actually got our letter. So our number for next year will be five twenty-one, two thirty-eight, so that's what we're preparing for, so I've made the adjustments in the allocations to match for that number. The other part that we talked about, everything that I talked about previously was really the community programming side of things, that's the agency application side. And now what I want to talk about is the neighborhood improvement side. And this is what we had talked about in the last consolidated plan. This is our strategy area, you've seen me show this to you all several times, where we've identified this as where we think we need to target the funding. We found that this has the lower income, older housing, more housing issues, cost burden issues, there's just a lot of data that supports investment in this area. And what I said back in January was, we're going to pick an area to focus in on and to address the needs in that area specifically. Now, what we've done is selected an area, Census Block Group one oh five point two. And I'm going to go back to kind of show you what that area really is. It's pretty much here. This top end of one oh five. It's going to be from Fairview to Fourteenth, from Chestnut to the bypass. So really what you're talking about is this part north, okay? And the reason we saw this is, as an opportunity for investment, is this is really an area that's in transition. There's opportunity there for us to affect change based on the amount of money that we have. We can go in, make the investments, and make the proper investments to invoke the change we need based on the transition that's going on. What we see there is this is the highest area of rental housing built before nineteen forty-nine. And if you really start looking at the data, this little area right here is a microcosm of Bowling Green. You start looking at the racial ethnicity breakdowns, you start looking at the percentage of rental owner, you start looking at some of that key specific data, and you start to see, this is just a miniature Bowling Green right here. And with this being the first time we've kind of done this, we felt like this was a good opportunity to start in, that this was a good neighborhood to start with. We've got some advantages up there. This is home to the Hill House, so we've got an asset in that area to take advantage of, to work with the community, to develop some partnerships to really do this. And what the plan would be is develop the staff work group, and I've talked about this before, and look at what are the needs here, address those, work with the neighborhood to identify the projects and opportunities, and then then prioritize those, and then I'll bring those back to you and say, okay, this is what we're going to do. So right now, based on the timing of where everything got finished, from February till today, I've been able to kind of get us to what the area is, but I haven't been able to get to the point of, this is specifically what we're going to do. But the main thing is to focus in on what are the needs in this specific area. This would be, you know, and if this community, this work group comes back and says, you know what, this area really needs housing, then, okay, then we focus in on housing. If it comes back, okay, we need sidewalks and public infrastructure, then we go back in with sidewalks, public infrastructure. Because what we have a tendency to do sometimes is just take all our resources and spread them all over town. And so we never really see effects. So the focus is to have long-term assets, long-term investments in a specific area, and then move to the next area. That's kind of the vision of how this is set up. But I would have to bring these back to you to say, these are the priorities that the group came up with, this is what we want to focus in on, because it's really only what we can afford. We've got about three hundred thousand dollars, three hundred and fifteen, two thirty-eight to do this with, so, you know, I don't want to prioritize something that we know that we can't afford to do. It needs to be something that we can achieve. We have to be able to do this, and I have to be able to do the project and move forward with it. That's the overview for that. We will be accepting comments until April thirtieth. You can send them in writing to me, email or by U.S. Postal, and I'll accept any here tonight, but at first I will entertain any questions or comments from the commission.
Any comments or questions? At this point, it's a public hearing, so we have an opportunity, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment regarding the Community Development Block Grant funding and our action plan, this would be the time to step forward. Seeing no one. All right, then, at this point, we'll conclude the public hearing, and thank you for that presentation, Mr. Childers.
Thank you, James.
All right. Next thing, or words and recognitions, Mr. Febo?
I have none, Mayor, thank you.
Ms. Hill, I believe you have something to bring to our attention.
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we're very honored to have with us two outstanding high school students. I'd like for them to come up, please, now. We have with us tonight two seniors from Bowling Green High School. First, we have with us Max Slattery. Mac was the swimming state runner-up, has received All-American consideration. He holds the Bowling Green High School record in the Hundred Yard Butterfly at fifty point five five, and he is going to be swimming at Western Kentucky University. So Mac, on behalf of the City Commission, congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Also with us, we have Ms. Goodman Johnson. Goodman was the diving state runner-up. She's the highest female state score in Bowling Green High history. She's the only diver in Bowling Green High School history to both win regionally and medal at state all four years in high school. And she will be diving at Western Kentucky University. So on behalf of the commission, Goodman, congratulations. And I believe they have family representatives here, one of them, we're sorry, she's already fallen asleep. Thank you all for being here, and we're so proud of you, and we look forward to hearing a lot about you at Western, so congratulations.
Thank you very much. It's been nice to meet you.
Congratulations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, unless anybody has anyone else, I'd like to call the attention that the city of Bowling Green has received its twentieth anniversary as a Tree City USA. We celebrated Arbor Day today, or, excuse me, Saturday, and we'll be making a couple appointments to the Tree Advisory Board tonight. So I want to thank Jared Weaver, who helped us in this effort for many, many years, not all twenty years, but many of them, nine of them, thank you. Let's see, I think I have one other thing to do, and this is kind of bragging on Mr. DeFebo and Mr. Mizel and all of us at city government. We just received our rating, our bond rating, and it increased from double A minus to double A. And to look at that summary, I'm very pleased to report how all the staff has worked very hard, but the assessment identifies very strong budgetary flexibility with available reserves above thirty percent of expenditures for the past several years, very strong liquidity, strong management supported by good financial management practices. And highlights of these policies include regular reviews of the budget performance by elected officials, long-term capital planning, and targeting to maintain a general fund balance equal to at least twenty percent of general fund revenues. So overall, a strong budgetary performance. Congratulations, Mr. Febo, Mr. Mizel, and all the citizens of Bowling Green. This is very, very good news. And then finally, just as a reminder, Hazardous Waste Day is at Greenwood High School on Saturday, the twenty-sixth, from eight to two. Anything else from anyone? Mr. DeFebo, do you have any comments?
I have no comments and no executive session tonight.
Amen. All right. Okay, I need approval of the minutes for April first, two thousand and fourteen.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, and any discussion, please call a roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Dale, appreciate it. We have an opportunity on our, every regular meeting for public comments, if anybody have anything they need to bring to our attention that's not on tonight's agenda, this would be the time. Seeing no one, we're going to move item number one to the end of the agenda and move right into Municipal Order two thousand and fourteen sixty-two.
Municipal order approving the promotions of Jason L. Colson to the position of Assistant Fire Chief, K. Michael Harvey to the position of Company Commander EMT, and Philip D. Tarnes to the position of Fire Apparatus Operator EMT in the Fire Department. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dinning, Mr. Febo?
With the retirement of Norm Simpson, we put in motion a series of promotion, acting on behalf of the department, and Greg Johnson is Mr. Elrod to make the promotional nominations.
Mayor Commissioners. I'm Assistant Chief Greg Elrod, and if you don't mind, I'll read some of this so I don't forget anything. As Mr. DeFebo said, I'm here on behalf of Chief Johnson and Bowling Green Fire Department to make recommendations for promotion for three positions. First off, I'd like to say congratulations to Norman Simpson on his retirement and seventeen-plus years with the city. Due to Norman's retirement, this will open up three positions within our department. If you don't mind, I'd like the gentleman to stand up when I call their name, so you can put a face with a name. First to fill the position of Assistant Chief of Training will be Company Commander Jason Colson. Jason started in the city in nineteen ninety-five and promoted to his current position of Company Commander in two thousand and six. Jason has done an excellent job as a Company Commander and has been involved in numerous projects that have greatly benefited our department. I'm sure he'll take the same dedication and drive and excel in his new role as a training officer. Next is Fire Apparatus Officer Mike Harvey. Mike started in the city in two thousand and four and promoted to his current position in two thousand and nine. He has also been involved in multiple projects and excelled at any task he was ever assigned. Mike will continue to prosper in his new role as Company Commander. Firefighter Philip Tarnes, he started in the city in two thousand and seven and has been very active since his arrival. He spent the last couple of years at our Greenwood Station on Rescue Six, working on our technical rescue specialties with his crew. Philip will work hard to adapt his new position as a Fire Apparatus Officer. As you're aware, our promotional process is very competitive, and these three gentlemen have worked very hard to put theirself in a position to be considered. So on behalf of Chief Johnson and the Bowling Green Fire Department, I would like for you to consider these three gentlemen for promotion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dale, we appreciate that. And I know you've got all your families here with you and support of all your family in blue there, we appreciate all of you coming out tonight. Any comments or questions, Mr. Dinning?
Mayor, do I have to vote on all three of them?
If you want to pick one out, we can set him aside, that's all right. If you want to pick one out, we can set him aside.
The first name we call.
First, what was it? He looks familiar, I don't remember his name now.
Colson, I believe was the name. I don't know about him.
Congratulations to all of you, please call a roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
And yes, thank y'all for sitting through this, congratulations. And please feel free, if y'all got places to go and things to do.
I would like to apologize for making a racket for us to get down so we can do our penning ceremony.
No problem.
Thank you guys.
Thank you for coming.
It's one thing about it, Mayor, the Fire Department, when they have one promotion, all in the department shows up.
Thank you.
I believe you can't, you've got the heat on, man.
All right, the next item is Municipal Order two thousand and fourteen sixty-three.
Municipal order approving the promotion of James L. Napper to the position of Code Enforcement Coordinator in the Neighborhood and Community Services Department. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip, second by Hill, and Mr. Febo?
Thank you, Mayor. With the decision by Teddy Webb to seek other challenges in the department, this created an opening in the Code Enforcement Coordinator role. We advertised publicly twice, and we had twenty-three final candidates, and which we interviewed eight. From that distillation, we believe that Mr. Napper is the best candidate, and Brent is here today to put his name and the accolades for Mr. Napper in before you.
Mr. Childers?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebo. Some of you might remember James, he was a police officer here with the city of Bowling Green for fifteen years, and a police officer at Western before that for five years. So he does have an extensive law enforcement background, and I think that's one of the greatest assets that he have, is the understanding of dealing with people, but also applying law and enforcing it in a tactical manner. He's been with us as a Code Enforcement Inspector for two years, and I've been able to witness his work ethic, his recording, you know, the way he carries himself and the way he interacts with people. And I think both of those are his strong suits. And we've been spending the last few weeks since I made this recommendation and coming up with some new ideas for code enforcement and some of our service delivery, and I hope to be able to present some of those to you here in a few weeks. It is unfortunate, though, James does not bring a solution to what we talked about at four o'clock to the table. I should have put that in the interview process to make that part of it, but I think he'll be a great partner for NCS and the city of Bowling Green moving forward and developing a better neighborhood delivery system. Thank you.
Thank you. And James, if you'd stand up so that the people at home know who they're going to be seeing if they end up in code enforcement. Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, congratulations, James. Municipal Order two thousand and fourteen sixty-four.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Holly W. Avery to the position of Animal Control Officer in the Police Department. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams, Mr. Febo?
Make a film broke, but I'll try to work through this. When Roxy Ross chose to retire, we went out to public advertisement for the position. We had a hundred and twenty people showed desire to work for the city. From that process, we came upon Holly. She had worked for us previously and is currently working as probation officer and looking for new challenges with us. I believe Holly is here, sitting next to Mike.
She's here.
And I recommend her for appointment to an Animal Control Officer. Just a point of interest, Brent is going to have more challenges. We're doing some reorganization, we're going to move Animal Control from the Police Department under to Neighborhood and Community Services, believing we can provide good service there.
I understand. Looking forward to it, aren't you? Any comments or questions? Please call a roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dinning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes, congratulations, Holly. Municipal Order two thousand and fourteen sixty-five.
Municipal order approving the appointments of Richard Blake Briscoe and Connie Pittman to the Bowling Green Community Tree Advisory Board. So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Dinning. I'll take this one, it's my responsibility to find individuals to serve on our various boards and commissions, and Jared helped me with one, and Blake Briscoe is here with us tonight, and Connie Pittman, who brought herself to our attention out of this, so we're very excited to have them. Blake is a, in the Department of Phil's Facilities Management at Western, and Ms. Connie is President of the Bowling Green Garden Club, so we appreciate your willingness to serve and help us in our advisory position on the tree board. Thank you very much.
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Thank y'all very much for helping us out on that, too. All right, next is Municipal Order 2014-66.
Municipal order approving the appointment of Gary Fields to the Board of Park Commissioners.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill, second by Williams. This is also a recommendation for appointment to fulfill the unexpired term of Louis Burke on the Parks Advisory Board, who moved out of town. Gary Fields is principal at Bowling Green High School. It's very important that our Parks Department work in conjunction with the facilities that our school system has available, and glad to appoint him, and glad that he was able to help us out on that. Is there any discussion? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-67.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting bid number 2014-22 for the purchase and installation of UV improvements for Bowling Green Aquatics and the Parks and Recreation Department from Spear Corporation of Rochdale, Indiana, in the amount of $183,847.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Waltrip and second by Hill. Mr. Febo?
One of the quiet but important services the city provides is filtration and chlorination of our various swimming pools. Tonight, we're here to add another level of protection with ultraviolet technology to help not only the two places at the swimming pool, but also what is essentially a swimming pool at Circus Square. A fountain is considered a swimming pool by Health Department standards. This will help take care of special events that we have during some days. So Brent is here, if you have any questions about those events or how this will help, I recommend your approval.
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-68.
Municipal order authorizing renewal of bid number 2012-49 for turnout gear, jackets, pants, and accessories for the Fire Department from Bluegrass Uniforms of Bowling Green, Kentucky, for 28 additional sets at a unit price of $2,287.25 per set, with a total amount not to exceed $64,043, and amending and clarifying Municipal Order Number 2012-201 to authorize the purchase of 25 sets of turnout gear at a unit price of $2,287.25 per set.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Dunning and second by Hill. Mr. Febo?
Every time a firefighter leaves the firehouses, they put on protective armor known as turnout gear. In 2012, we went out to bid with the expectation of purchasing 15 suits of armor or turnout gear. We end up purchasing 25 at the time. We're here today to clarify what was misjudgment at the time of only needing 15, when we actually needed 25, and we're also here to ask you to purchase an additional 28. We have the money for this turnout gear. The bid from 2012 is still appropriate. In essence, we're cleaning up a process that changed from the time we first approved the bid. Todd Napier is managing this for the Fire Department here. Do you have any questions as to protocol or purpose?
Any comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2014-7.
Ordinance renaming Street. Ordinance approving the renaming of First Street to Legacy Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Hill and second by Waltrip. Mr. Febo?
Yes. We have two streets in Bowling Green that both consider themselves number one. Under our 911 protocols and just common sense, we can't have two streets in Bowling Green named First Street. So one of the First Street is located off Garvin Lane. There's a request from our own Public Works Department to clear up this and change that number one street, First Street, to Legacy Drive near Garvin Lane. 911 agrees with this. I think Police Department, Fire Department all agree, and we're here to recommend that change.
So from State Street Bridge to the railroad track, they're still First Street.
Now, First Street is the only part of that is...
Yeah, Jeffy?
Avenue.
Huh?
Downtown, it's First Avenue, Garvin Lane, and it's First Street.
Okay. Yeah, but in First Avenue, isn't it just that block and a half section between Park and the Medical Center stuff?
Yeah, I think so, it's just very...
Hold it, hold it.
Yeah, you and I grew up when First Street was down by the river, but I think, I don't think First Street is down there anymore.
Where does bypass start? Off of State Street Bridge?
First Avenue is that sort of piece, it would be right by, kind of dead to the EMS and nursing center. Yeah, that's what I was thinking. It's parallel with bypass, first and second, and we move on up.
It's only a block and a half long.
What is Corvus on?
It's on the bypass.
Okay. I'm coming in off of the State Street Bridge. I'm not trying to create a problem, I'm just trying to get in my mind where I am, even though I've been here all my life. I've been here all my life. When you come in off of the State Street Bridge, down there where the new construction of the new, where the dirt's packed up, and we had to call the contractor
Right.
...to clean it up because it was draining down.
Right.
If you turn right, right there, and you come towards College Street, then from College Street over to Kentucky Street, what is that?
Kentucky is, we have second there.
No, it's not. Second Street is up where Jimmy's Barbershop and Gray's Gilbert Clinic.
It's Riverview.
That's my question, that's what I'm getting at. What is the name of that street there? And it is Riverview?
Yeah.
Okay, it used to be at one time First Street from the direction that I'm talking about, from State Street Bridge over to College Street by the little convenience store, shell store, that used to be First Street. All of that over straight through until it becomes Beach Bend is River Green, right?
Riverview.
Riverview, I'm sorry.
Yeah. First Street, the two, two block and a half or two blocks I'm aware of is adjoining Medical Center property, and I'm trying to think of...
Park.
They changed that name, Joe, I believe, when the new bridge came in, when they could go across from there.
Did you touch the street bridge?
Yes, sir. I think that's when it went away from First. They tore down all those shotgun houses there on the river and widened by three lanes at that time.
Yeah, and I don't recall when that name change took place.
Okay, that's fine. I...
Yes, sir.
Well, how will this be handled with PVA to make sure all that gets taken care of, and what's the process with that? Some of this is in the TIF, it's, it could be confusing later on.
No, we're not changing anything that has to do with the TIF. This is just a half a block street over on the other side of Bowling Country Club.
Okay, it's on over past the railroad and that railroad bridge.
No change downtown.
No, it's off of Gordon Avenue.
This one we're talking about is at the back of Bowling Green Country Club.
Okay, Commissioner Dunning was making me wonder about that one little stretch.
Off Garvin Lane.
Got it, sorry.
Yeah, I know where the new spot is at because we had some questions brought to the city's attention in the past years about that. I just wanted to make sure that people didn't confuse the two locations.
This is the one off Garvin Lane.
Before you sit down, Jeff, this was a subject of inquiry.
Yes, that's correct.
Apparently, the status of that is it's going to be a city street.
It was plotted as a city street. We found records of that indicating that, so it is a public right of one. There has been some interaction between some property owners there, but from our assessment, it is a city street.
And that's the end of the discussion, or is it?
Dean, I don't...
Well, I mean, short history, actually, this was planned years ago and then annexed into the city even before that, so when it came in, we considered it as a street. What happens, it said, there's two other houses there, they both have Garvin Lane addresses. And then another property owner came in across the street, wanted to build a house, came to us, of course, you've got to have, what, 50-foot frontage? We looked at the plats and we concluded that was a city street, gave them a permit to build a house. Then the neighbors crossed the street, took the position, that was a private drive, ended up in litigation. Litigation's still ongoing, I think it's basically resolved, but everybody's...
It's ongoing?
Well, it's not completely, it's not been dismissed yet, but I think they're all fairly happy, I guess, with what's going on, but...
I was going to say, if it's...
But this house is...
Should we be addressing this if it's still litigation?
No, no need to, because this house is getting ready to be sold, and it may already be sold, and it's got people, I guess, coming into it, and we've got two first streets, so we've got to name that street.
I just don't want to affect the outcome of the litigation.
No, that's not, both the attorneys know about this, and they don't have any issues with this at all.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? Please call or roll.
Waltrip?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal Order 2014-69.
Municipal order requesting that the City-County Planning Commission of Warren County revisit the future land use map in the comprehensive plan for all newly annexed areas and targeted annexation areas to ensure that future land uses reflect urban development and densities consistent with development within the city.
So moved.
Motion by Hill, second by Waltrip. Mr. Febo?
Thank you, Mayor. Last month, we talked more about our annexation plan to help grow our community. Steve Hunter from the Planning Commission appeared before us and reminded us that there may be some cleanup work to do between the flum and our, the flum is the future land use map, and our desire to have greater density and development in these target areas, so he suggested that we asked him to ask the Planning Commission to help reconcile those areas, to make it consistent with the future land use map. Steve is here, if you have any questions.
Does he have any comments or questions for Mr. Hunter?